It's six o'clock, so we'll open the June 19 meeting of the East Long Metal Planning Board. I need to announce that under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20E, we are recording this meeting and also putting it on tape for LCAT, and I have to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. Okay, no one else is. So, first thing is called ROL, and we have Tyve Richards, and George Kingston, and Russ, and Lou, and you're missing John.
Yes.
We have minutes of May 15, 2018, and have a motion to approve.
I can make the motion to approve in a minute.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, any corrections? Mr. Torture is here.
Yeah.
Very good. Hearing none, all those in favor accepting the minutes as written.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. First round of business is a request for waiver of site plan by, for an aesthetics studio located at 208 North Main Street, Suite 7, that's the Reinder Building, in the commercial zoning district. Applicant is Natalia Zepensky, 57 Rensselaer Street, Springfield, Mass.
That's what I thought. Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is CDB Realty LLC. Owner's address is 280 North Main Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. The name of proposed business is the GloTique, and the owner of the business is Natania.
Zepensky.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your help. Thanks. Business owner's address is 57 Rensselaer Street, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 280 North Main Street, Suite 7, East Long Metal, Mass. It's an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Sunday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. by appointment. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is August 1, 2012. Summary business operation is aesthetic and beauty services, spray tanning, facial, skincare, and waxing. The application has been signed and dated May 24, 2018.
Any questions from the board?
Please take forward.
Have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Another request for waiver of site plan for a home office?
East Long Metal, request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Susan DeJoy. Owner's address is 87 P's Road. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Mid-Wi-fi.
Whitfer.
Whitfer, excuse me. Education Design and Development LLC. Owner of business is Susan DeJoy and Susan Kraus. Business owner's address is 87 P's Road, East Long Metal. Property address is 87 P's Road, East Long Metal. Property district is residential A. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation, it varies. Number of employees, including owner, no employees, just two partners. Date of last parking plan, no parking is required. Summary business operation, consulting business clients will be national academic medical centers, no local business. There's a lot of white out here. Number of commercial vehicles is one.
None.
None, oh, excuse me. Amount of product storage, one box of brochures. The application was signed and dated May 15, 2018.
And it's a home office, basically. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll get to the fun stuff. An A&R. Go ahead with the A&R.
Is this one we're going to be reading?
Okay. I think if you read the mail, pretty much sums it up.
Mr. Reed, I'll see if you can get it.
Okay. A&R, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to be required subdivision approval under subdivision control law to create a lot having 140 lineal feet of furniture at 141 Porter Road, assessors parcel 48-71-B, in resident A District, zoning district. Applicant 141 Porter Road partnership, 414 Porter Road, that's probably a typo.
Actually, 141.
Is 141 Road, pardon.
Porter Road.
Porter Road.
Yep. So is someone here to address the A&R?
Oh, yeah. Good. Michael Smith, surveyor, this is the owner.
Warner Cross. Welcome, Mr. Cross.
Just go ahead, you take the seat, I don't mind standing.
There's another one over there.
Go ahead. This might take a while, I guess we have to see. So, do you have the plans, and tell us what you're going to do? I've seen this with these, but none of the rest of the board has. They've seen them, they were emailed.
Basically, the idea is the property's in two parcels right now. The light dotted line that almost pork chops the lot are the existing lot lines. Basically, what we're doing is combining all the property into one and just cutting out parcel D, which is in the upper corner, as a conforming building lot, and two parcels, new parcel D and new parcel E.
What's the furniture on that one?
140.
140.
Yes.
Any questions? Please stay forward. Is anyone here to address 141 Porter Road that wants to see the plans? No? So, has furnished on Grove Street. They are combining the two subparcels they had before and then cutting out this one parcel. Pretty straightforward. Have a motion to endorse.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of endorsing the A&R for 141 Porter Road? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? unanimous? You are approved. We will sign these later tonight, and you can deal with the office. And thank you for the cooperation.
Well, they're welcome to come in and line the walls.
Who's the only one? that, we will take up Jeffrey Lane, and we will not, after that, we will take up, the zoning amendment will be probably the, at the end of, towards the end of the meeting. So depending on what project you're here for, okay, the next one will be Hidden Ponds. We have to sign first, yeah. We do have to sign, but that's, what I meant was, I don't think the place here can sign.
Town of East Long Metal, signed permit application dated May 14, 2018. Business name and address is Meadows Health Center. Business owner's name and address is Dr. Ghul, 40 Crane Avenue, East Long Metal, Mass. Property owner's name and address is Jeffrey Lakritz, Maple Crane Realty, East Long Metal. Contract person, Daniella Stefan.
Stefan. Close.
Thanks. Appreciate your help, I really do. Square footage area proposed sign is two by four. It is attached to the building on a railing. It's a permanent sign. Number of existing signs is zero. Application, applicant, thank you Danielli, estimated cost is $250. Signed affidavit is attached.
So this is going on the old lumber building?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And that's going to go on the?
Mr. Mackey.
Any questions about that one? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, that one passes. That's it. You'll get the permit, the permit should be repaired in a day or two.
All right, thanks so much.
You're off and running.
If you get your seat, they're going to want you to get it.
I know. You want a seat? Thank you.
We do have an empty seat down front now. Do you want to do, do licks?
Town of East Long Metal, signed permit application dated March 26, 2018. Business name and address is Lex Spa, 13 Gerald Ave., East Long Metal, Mass. Business owner's name and address is Samachi Daniels, 22 Cooley Street, Agua One, Mass. Property owner's name and address is Andrea Martin, 84 Willow Brook Road, Long Metal, Mass. Phone number is listed here. Square footage of proposed sign is 15. Freestanding, yes. Right above the ground, 10 feet. It is not attached to the building. No projections to the building. Setback from the property line is 12 feet. Distance from nearest side yard is 38 feet. It's a permanent sign, it is not illuminated. Number of existing signs is zero. Number, square footage of existing signs is zero. Number of proposed signs is one. Total square footage of proposed sign is 15. Total square footage proposed and existing sign is 15. Application's been signed, dated, and the estimated cost is $485, and the signed affidavit is attached.
And it's been approved by the building, the zoning has been approved by the zoning inspector. Have a motion to approve?
So just a question, on a freestanding sign?
Yeah.
Would be more appropriate on the property or on the building?
It's up to the person putting the sign up, what they think is appropriate. Have a motion to approve? Somebody?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I guess we have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that carries you now. Okay.
Mr. Chitt, you also have a public hearing for Lex Nail Salon. Do you want to do that concurrently?
Which?
The same application, the same applicant, rather, but if you look at case nine?
Let's keep it in order. It's on the agenda. Because I know there are a lot of people here for Hidden Ponds, a lot of people for Jeffrey Lane, and we want to, don't want to hold them up longer than we have to. So the next thing we have is a continuation of a public hearing for Hidden Ponds Estates for a definitive subdivision approval of 20 lot subdivision. Yeah, read that.
Okay. East Long Metal Planning Board, public hearing notice. The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing and, well, it says April 17, 2018. At 6:15 in the East Long Metal School Committee Conference Room located in East Long Metal High School at 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, on application filed by Bedrock Financial LLC, DBA Rosebud Builders, for a definitive subdivision plan entitled Hidden Ponds Estates, comprised of 20 proposed lots off the end of Redstone Drive, also identified as assessors parcel ID 23-77-0. Information relating to this application is on file. East Long Metal Planning Board's office located Town Hall 60, Santa Square is available for review by a public hearing, regular business hours.
And just to clarify, because there's some confusion that occurred today.
Yes.
You're still filing this as one subdivision and one lot?
Yeah, so, for the record, I'm Rob Lebec, from our Lebec Associates here this evening, representing Rosebud Builders, specifically Al Joyce, who's been in the audience this evening in the back. So today, kind of a little surprise to us, there was an email, an email exchange between Al, Mr. Joyce, and Mrs. Brothers, and specific to the phasing, or the potential phasing of the construction of the roadway. So in no way, shape, or form is this, is there another project, specifically what has been public noticed. We're submitting, everything that's been submitted under the public notice is exactly what we're talking about this evening. I think Al, Mr. Joyce, would still potentially like to review or discuss the opportunity for potentially bonding portions of the road, but that's really the discussion for later.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, just to bring everybody up to speed, we're proposing a 20 lot subdivision off the end of Redstone Drive. There's an old quarry back here that has two quarry ponds that are left over from the quarry operations. It's hard to understand, there was a recreation facility there for years. The property pretty much is entirely fenced in, the Butters would be familiar with the six-foot chain link fence around the outside of the property. So we're proposing 20 lots within, within the surrounding area, surrounding quarry operation. We had one public hearing already. That public hearing was, at that point, there was a few questions raised by the planning board, specifically Mr. Kingston, in relationship to the size of the lots, and the calculation for the size of the lots, and whether or not they should include the ponds. And there was also peer review going on. The peer review process is something where the town submits our drawings to a peer review engineer, they make comments, and then we address those comments. So we have done so since the last public hearing. So, subsequent to the last public hearing, we went back and looked at the zoning regulations, and I do have a copy of the lot area versus buildable lot area. It's a little interesting, because buildable lot area, absolutely, as Mr. Kingston had mentioned, does not include wetlands and ponds, et cetera. Unfortunately, in the zoning regulations, the table for, a table for lot area, the dimensional table for lots, does not include buildable lot area. It's a little confusing, but we erred on the side of caution, so what we've done is we've reconfigured our lots. So all of our lots that we now have, the adjusted property lines in the area within those lots, we have a minimum of 25,000 square feet of upland area calculated. We have surplus now, because we have some of the pond, but we have at least the 25,000. So we revised that. So the lots have been reconfigured to address that. In addition, on my plan, you see that?
Yeah.
So Lot 14, right here, there was a concern over the, kind of, geometry of Lot 14, and it interplayed with the 50-foot buffer zone. So that 50-foot, or there's a 100-foot buffer zone from this, because this is regulated as a pond, under the Wetlands Protection Act. So there was a discussion, for Mr. Kingston, who's familiar with the conservation regulations, as to how that would interplay with the 50-foot, minimum 50-foot buffer that the conservation likes to see. So we've provided, Mr. Joyce has provided a memo to your planning board, dated April 4th, I believe it's dated April 4th. And on that, we describe the changes that we've made, and essentially, at the last, on the last page, there are sketches associated with Lot 15 and Lot 14. So 15 and 14, showing how the houses would be configured on that lot, how they can be built outside the 50-foot buffer zone, et cetera. So, that's the reconfiguration of the lots. The roadway itself has stayed the same, there's been no changes to the proposed roadway. The peer review process that we went through, we dealt with a peer review engineer by the name of Tim Kuhn from Russo Associates. We had an exchange back and forth between Philippe Cravoe in our office and Tim, and I have a letter dated June 11th. That letter dated June 11th has four comments, I'm sorry, three comments we made, all essentially related to whether or not the planning board wants us to construct a sidewalk on this portion of Redstone Drive. As proposed, we have a sidewalk on one side of Redstone Drive, I'm sorry, one side of the new subdivision road, all the way around the cul-de-sac, and then also some up here. We are not currently in our plans, including sidewalk here. So that was a discussion and a potential recommendation from Russo Associates, suggesting that that sidewalk maybe shouldn't, should be installed. In addition, if that sidewalk is installed, they want us to adjust our drainage ever so slightly to bring our area drains, which are currently off the road, up to the gutter line, where the curb would be, essentially on the edge of the road, as opposed to off the road. So that's, those are, those are the remaining comments, and obviously a discussion point for this evening, and I'm trying to remember if there was anything else at the last meeting. Actually, you know what? There was. There was regarding fencing around the ponds, whether or not that is or should or could be required. I know that the town's done some research, maybe let you speak to that, but we are still in the same position that we would like to allow the homeowners the responsibility of deciding whether or not that they would want to fence, you know, around their property associated with the pond. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions through the chair.
Okay, what we'll do is we'll take it to the board first, then we'll take comments from the public, and take it back to the board. So, starting with John, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Nothing, no.
Lou?
No, I don't, no.
Russ?
The only question I have to get started is, how long has that parcel been zoned residential?
I don't know if I know that. George, would you?
It's always been zoned residential.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. In the original zoning of the town, that was zoned residential. Okay. The quarrying that was going on there was a, if you will, pre-existing non-conforming use for the property. Tyve?
Yeah, I'd like to see the sidewalk extended over to that other cul-de-sac. I mean, Rizzo, it was one of Rizzo's comments, they made it clear that it was just a minor change in the drainage order to make that happen. And a sidewalk around a cul-de-sac that doesn't connect anything, doesn't really do much anyway, so I think it's a good idea.
We understand.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think the sidewalk should be extended. Actually, I'd like to see the sidewalk on both sides of the Hidden Ponds Drive, or whatever that's going to be called, but certainly to connect the sidewalk from one part of the subdivision with the other part of the subdivision makes perfect sense. That way people can, because that road is very narrow, and walking on it with that much additional traffic would probably not be safe, and this allows people within the, to move within the subdivision without having to drive, and I like that. So I think that's, we have looked into the fencing issue, we've not found any guidance on it one way or the other. I would like to see it fenced, but I can understand leaving that to the homeowners to make the decision. If they have little kids, they're going to want to fence. But there's nothing in the law or regulations that backs that, so unfortunately, I'm going to have to drop that suggestion. I am glad that you've reconfigured the two lots, so that we have space for a house, you know, with the setback, and also without penetrating, because I am concerned, I know this is not conservation, but those ponds do not have an outlet, and if we have lawn up to the edge of the ponds, we're going to have some issues with Aljay and so on. So, I'm glad you've reconfigured it that way. I realize it's still going to be tight lots, it's not going to be a lot of lawn there, but that's the way it goes. I don't have any other comments?
So you've mentioned Lot 14 and 15, is that?
Yes, sir.
What, is the backside of Harwich?
No, Harwich, the backside of Harwich would be lots probably four, five, and three.
So there were some concerns by the residents about, kind of, the drainage?
Yes.
And how you might manage that?
Yes.
Did you massage that in any way?
No, what we did is we reviewed that with the peer review engineer. They look at all of our storm water, they look at the pre-development conditions and post-development conditions. Specifically, we have a storm water basin that controls our water, and that we are required to handle up to and including the 100-year storm, and that's what we've done on site. There is, in fact, a swale, I think a few of the Butters have mentioned it, there's kind of a drainage swale that runs behind their property now. We won't be increasing, and are not allowed to increase water to that design point additionally, you know, over what is existing now. So not to say that we can de-water that area, we can't, but we can match pre-development and post-development conditions. So that's what we've done. We've done it here, we're handling all the water from this subdivision, as well as we have, as mentioned earlier in the previous public hearing, a storm water control area here, but then outlets to the buffer zone here.
At this point, I'll open it up to the public. If you appreciate, if you can, to come forward and speak into the microphone, at least we need your name and address for the, for the record. So would anyone like to speak at this point, or ask any questions on Hidden Ponds? Sir?
I'm Rocco Caravetto from 16 Redstone Drive. I just have one question, with the addition of 22 lots there, that's going to more than double the sewer usage right now. Currently, 17 houses, and if you figure three bedrooms per house, that's 50 bedrooms. My understanding is that sewer systems are designed based on number of bedrooms, not the number of houses. So if you put another 60 or 80 bedrooms on an eight-inch sewer line, I'm not sure it's going to hold that capacity.
DPW has reviewed this, I believe, and has stated that the sewer does have the capacity, and I have to defer to DPW, because they've got the engineers to do that calculation, but I appreciate your comment.
According to the map that I have, there's 370 feet of eight-inch sewer line that has a .4 pitch, and it only can take 150 gallons a minute. I'm not sure that this whole development will not produce less than 150 gallons a minute.
I can say this DPW has weighed in on it, and they think it will.
Okay. They got to clean it.
That's true. Any other comments or questions from the public at this time? Sir?
Mark Rickio, 20 Maynard Street. My question is, where are the entry points going to be? Like, which streets?
Yeah. Off of Redstone Drive, there's one access point here. This is the terminus of Redstone Drive.
Is that the only access point?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Sir?
My name's Phil Rosa, 61 Harwich Road. I'm one of the Butters. As Mr. Denver mentioned, there is a swale behind there, and it carries a lot of water, particularly winter months, when we have big, big snow, so the spring, there's a lot of water back there, and in big rain events, there's always been water back there. My parents lived in this property, my wife and I now live in, so I've seen it since 1960. I have a question, a concern, again, as a Butter, and that would be, the storm drain area behind 77 Harwich Road and 71 is between lots three and four. The storm drain area is going to be as big as a bloody lot. I mean, that's significant area, and as it abuts those homes to the rear, it adds no value to those homes. When that, when that pond is full of water, we can expect mosquitoes and other things to happen there. It just seems like it's right in the face, if you will, of the Butters, who have very little to say about it. It's a big area, if you look at it, it's almost as big as the lots were, and again, I'm using an original plan, I don't know about the current plan, I haven't seen that.
That hasn't changed.
Okay, but that's a big storm drainage area. It's big an area, that means they're expecting a lot of water, and this gentleman refers to 100-year event. Have we seen lots of 100-year events lately? I mean, things are happening like that. So again, as a Butter, I know everyone's got to make money here, but it seems like the people on Redstone, it seems like the people on Harwich should still have value in their homes, and not take away from it, of which this will. Thank you very much.
I want to comment again on?
Sure.
The fact that this is not going to change the amount of water in the swale.
Correct.
It's not going to increase it or decrease it, okay? That's correct.
That's correct. And the basin is almost the size of a lot. It's basing the soil types.
And how long is the basin expected to hold waters?
I believe it's 72 hours.
72 hours.
Yeah. And, you know, it's, you know, it is, it is certainly a storm water basin, it is adjacent to their property, but, you know, it's sized to control the storm water, the storm events required, 100-year storms, six and a half. 100-year storm, six and a half inches of rain in a 24-hour period.
Right.
It's a pretty substantial amount of rain.
And if you've been around town and looked at the well-maintained basins that we have in town, they're basically grass. So it's like having a depressed lawn that you're looking at. It's not like this ugly sewer treatment station or something.
And with the new standards that came out in 2008, we're required specifically to have an operation and maintenance plan, which is both short-term and long-term operation and maintenance plan for the basin itself, which is very specific on inspections and cleaning and how it gets handled.
Right.
And who's going to do that? Who's going to maintain it?
It would be, it would be the homeowners, or the builder at first, and then when it's transferred over to either the homeowners association or to the town, it would be handled by the homeowners association or the town.
The town will not accept it.
No.
So it will be handled by the homeowners association. My understanding is that the homeowners association fails in their duty, then the town can go in and take care of problems and assess the cost of that to the homeowners.
They're typically required to handle, to carry a insurance fund, you know, for the basin itself. Somebody were to get hurt or, you know, something were to happen in association with it, there's typically insurance associated with that.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Sir?
I'm Al Joyce with Rosebud Builders, and I just want to let you know that after the public is done, I want to have a chance to mention my letter to the board today before you close off. If there's, if everyone's done, I could go now. If there are more people...
Your letter to the board?
Yes.
I can't, I can't record you there.
Do we have a letter from him?
No, email.
You do have an email.
Email out?
Which...
Well, I sent it as an attachment.
We have not...
Well, it was related to the request to have...
Just a second. Let's see if there are any, one else from the public that would just speak. Seeing none at the moment, I'll ask Mr. Joyce to enter into the record his comments, which we, I do not have a copy of and...
It's what caused some of the confusion today.
Oh, I saw that letter.
Yes.
We got that letter, right?
And I apologize to the board and to everyone else if I, at the last minute, I didn't intend to cause any confusion. But just from a practical point of view, we're doing one subdivision, we're going to start it, we're going to finish it. To me, as a builder, is this section here, which is where we're going to start. And then when we're far enough along in this section where, and this is how we all, all the subdivisions go in like this, when we're far enough along where we can start getting building permits, that's when we have to post a bond. And then when we post the bond, the building inspector can give us building permits on the lots. And that's generally right around after the road is rough braided, after the utilities are in, after the gravel is down, either before or after the first coat of asphalt. And then after that's done and we start building homes, we would start in this section. So while we're building homes here, we're going to be working in here. And it doesn't make much difference to us, but it just seems like it might be more convenient for everyone, for the homeowners and for the town, if there was, instead of having a bond on the entire parcel, if there was one bond for this amount of work. I'm told that DPW comes up with an estimate of what it costs us to do the work. So they're going to come up with an estimate of what it costs to do this work, they'll come up, any undone work at the time we submit the money or the bond. We put cash down, we don't use a bond. And then if it was okay with the board, we'd like to have one bond for this section and another bond for that section. And if it's not okay with the board, we're perfectly happy to just continue with what we had originally proposed.
Okay. My, my understanding is, first of all, the amount of the bond is set by DPW, not by the board. Secondly, DPW wants to get the bond before the work starts, because the reason we have the bond is we don't want to have a road cut and unpaved and something happens, I mean, stuff happens. We all know that.
Yes. Oh, yes.
And, you know, the town is left with an unfinished road. So typically, they want the bond before the work on the road starts, because something could happen at any time once the work starts. And the point that this broader's brought up is that there are two ways to do this, okay? Great Woods, for instance, has gone through, I think, 12 or 14 different phases, each of which was treated as a separate subdivision, okay? And other projects, like the Pequay project going in right now, we approved the entire subdivision, it was bonded to the entire subdivision at the, at the start. They chose to do this part first and that part second. I realize that most builders are not going to put up 20 houses. You're going to put up five houses and sell them and then put up the next five and so on. But the point being that if we were to treat it as two separate subdivisions, as this broader pointed out, then the notice was, was not right, and therefore we'd have to start over. So I think we're, we're going with this, is if we're going to approve it as one subdivision, we're going to want one bond, okay, for, for the roads. And I believe there'll be a separate bond for the sewer pump station.
We're perfectly happy with that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anything else from the public at this point? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. Any additional questions, please?
I just had a point, not necessarily to you, but what happened to the tour today? Maybe I missed that.
That was canceled because of, it was, first of all, it's overgrown, extremely buggy at this season of the year. And second of all, with the confusion that we had between the late requests to do it in phases and this broader's determination, if we did it that way, it would invalidate the hearing and we'd have to start over. And then the applicant's decision not to do it that way so that we could keep it as one, I think that was why it was canceled. Yeah. Now, if the board would still like to do a walkthrough before it is, before we vote on it, we can do that, okay? And we continue the hearing?
I would appreciate that, just so that...
How does the rest of the board feel? Would you like to see it?
I want to see the abutters on Harwich, and I want to see where that is.
Sure.
I mean, that's the thing that I was going to focus on.
Right.
Yeah, I'd want to get...
We're going to do that tour.
Right.
And I want to take a good look at, you know, at the pond and where the, you know, the difference in feet between the pond and the backyard was going to be, so you can get a real good eyeball.
Right.
I mean, it's residentially zoned, so eventually they're going to be doing something, you know, residential, and I understand that. But it would have been good to be able to do that, yeah.
Well, I can suggest that we continue it until we can get a walk and also get the new plans showing the sidewalk, okay? And... Any other comments from the board? We have the engineer here, any questions for, on drainage or anything else at this point?
We're just a little disappointed that we didn't get that, have the walk today, you know, because we feel like we were there.
We were ready.
We were ready. I got the email two hours ago, like, what do you mean? I worked my whole day around this.
Can I comment on that? I don't know if this can happen, but it was suggested that there is, by Connie, it was, and if I miss quoting Connie, I apologize, she can correct me. But she says there is the possibility, because if this is postponed, it can't be postponed for two weeks, it would be postponed for four weeks.
Right.
And we're kind of anxious to get going. I'm also disappointed, I actually did a site visit today, but it went great.
Do you like the...
It looked like a nice place for a subdivision. But she said there is a potential to, after, people could even visit on their own. We did place markers on the center line every 100 feet going down the road. I'm available to meet with anyone to show them the site. And then it was suggested that it is possible to convene a meeting prior to a month from now.
That is possible, depending on people's availability, okay? So we'll have, we'll have to see what we can schedule, okay? Because I know that it's summertime and people go places in the summer. And so if we can find a time that we can get five of us together, I have no objection to that, okay? We've done it before.
Okay. That's all I can ask, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Do we have to all go together, George?
No.
Oh, all right.
I would just suggest that Mr. Joyce at least notify his partner that somebody's going to be coming, because he doesn't really like people walking in his property, who they are.
I would be very, I'm available at any time. The partner in question knows me at this point and he won't shoot me.
Okay.
I would be very happy to accompany anyone, because it would be confusing to look at the site without having some guidance.
Right. I agree with him, didn't you? I know what it's like.
So I'll move to adjourn?
No, to, continue.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to continue it to a date and time, sir? So the question is, when could we meet? Could we meet on the 10th of July, which is a Tuesday?
I'm going to be on vacation, but I could come back. I mean, if it doesn't, if another date doesn't work for me...
Well, the wrong part with that 10th, the 10th is, well, we can, we can meet at the same time as town council. Nothing stops us from doing that.
Correct.
We're in different places.
If that works for the four...
That's still three weeks from now. How about next Tuesday?
Oh, there's a good...
Russ is out of town on business, then.
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday, gentlemen.
Doesn't have to be a Tuesday. It could be any time.
You just need 48 hours and then it's to post.
How about next Monday, which would be...
25th?
25th? Can we get the walks in before then? I think we can.
I think so. I have a meeting in the afternoon.
The evening or the afternoon?
The after, like, 4:00 PM, but...
Okay, but this is not, not for the walk, this would be for the meeting, we'd hold it at night.
Oh, and, yeah, yeah, I mean, six...
This is the 25th, right?
Right. Okay. Yeah. I could do that. Everybody else available on 25th?
Yes.
25th is Friday, I mean.
Regular 6:00 PM time?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the Board of Appeals?
We will not be available.
Oh, okay.
Do you think you need to be? I mean, would you like to be? I didn't mean to...
None of you, George?
No. George, go ahead and ask her the question.
Is this just for the sidewalk?
Yes.
You're not going to be voting to approve at this meeting?
At this, yes.
At this...
Oh, excuse me.
This is not for the sidewalk, this is after the sidewalk, to hold a special meeting to vote. Yeah, so you wanted the...
We are not available because we have the Board of Appeals meeting.
How is the 26th work? You're out of town.
How about the 27th?
How about the 27th? Okay, how about the 29th? The Friday?
I might be out of town.
Okay, how about the...
We're working that out at home. So you don't want to vote tonight?
How about the 9th?
No, I've made a conscious decision to go out and look at every site, and I think it's important that I can do that.
Yeah, I agree. How does the 9th look?
The 9th of what, July?
July. Does that work for you guys?
Yep.
So July 9th at 6 o'clock? We have a motion to continue to July 9th at 6 o'clock.
And where would the meeting be, George? Here?
Here.
Do you want to meet at the site at 5:00?
No.
Yes.
Fine. You want to meet at 5:00, we're in, okay? And I'll be fresh in your minds. Okay, but the continuation of the hearing is to hear on July 10th at...
July 9th.
July 9th, that's on Monday, at 6:00, okay? Assuming we can get this room. And if we can't get this room, we will make sure it's posted as to where the room will be. But we should be here.
Move to my house. We got room.
So July 9th. I have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
And now we have some time to clear out and move on to the next one. And we have a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing for, no, this is a continuation, I'm sorry. We are continuing the public hearing for the Jeffrey Lane Extension Preliminary Subdivision Plan. Do you have something to read for that?
East Long Metal Planning Board Public Hearing, the Town of East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 19, 2018, at 6:00 in the East Long Metal School Committee Conference Room located in East Long Metal High School at 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, to consider a request for case SD-P 2018-02 Preliminary Subdivision Approval for a three-lot subdivision at 3.5 acres plus or minus located at Jeffrey Lane. Assessors' Parcel ID 40-12+13, 32+33, Residence A, Zoning District. The applicant, Jeffrey Bosworth, Southern New England Real Estate, Inc., 45 Noel Wood Drive, East Long Metal, Mass., 2001-028. Information relating to this application and file for public inspection at the East Long Metal Planning Board's office, Town Square, 60 Center Square, and is available for review by the public during regular business hours, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay, someone here from Jeffrey Lane.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Gary Weiner, 53 Mill Road in Hampton, Mass. I am the project engineer for the Jeffrey Lane Extension, which is on the north side of St. Joseph's Drive. With me tonight is Mr. Jeffrey Bosworth, Mr. John Mazarino, and also the attorney, Attorney Fitzgerald. We're here tonight with a preliminary plan that had been previously submitted for the extension of Jeffrey Lane to create three Residence A subdivision lots. The lots are in conformance with the current zoning regulations as defined by the town. For those, just for orientation purposes, Jeffrey Lane actually has two pieces to it. It has a northerly extension and also a southerly extension beyond St. Joseph's Drive. The parcel that we are discussing tonight is on the north side of St. Joseph's Drive and at the northerly end of the current Jeffrey Lane, which has a partial pavement on it to service the driveway for people that live on St. Joseph's Drive. The developer has purchased the parcel, about three and a half acres of land. It's currently vacant land, lightly tree, little bit of woods. Along the easterly side of the parcel is a sewer easement for the Town of East Long Metal. There are no wetlands on the site. Request for determination was given to the commission and a negative determination was issued by the Conservation Commission after reviewing the parcel. For a point of interest, the parcel was purchased from Mr. Herrick and extends a little bit to the, to the west into what was formerly land of Herrick. There, on the plan, if you look, are a number of test pits that were dug because at one point in time, the Town of East Long Metal and others had a stump dump wood waste area that encroached, if you will, onto the Herrick parcel. Prior to the purchase of our parcel, DEP and Peter Leveque went out, they, DEP observed tests pits to make certain that any wood waste remains off of the parcel that we're now proposing for three single-family homes. Again, it's vacant and lightly wooded. We're looking to extend basically to build a cul-de-sac that would be able to service the three lots. It's about 150 extra feet or additional feet into the parcel. Total length of the street would be about 300-plus feet from St. Joseph's Drive. Sewer, water, electric, gas lines would all be brought in off of St. Joseph's Drive. And because of the installation of the utilities, it's anticipated that the existing portion of Jeffrey Lane would be reconstructed in accordance with subdivision standards. Basically, a new street extending from St. Joseph's Drive. And stormwater is handled. It's a very small parcel with the minimal cul-de-sac. The stormwater would be handled utilizing infiltration. We would have a standard catch basin set up to take care of the stormwater and then infiltrate it. Test pits were dug. I'll discuss that in a moment in relation to the peer review that was done. But test pits were dug underneath in the location where the infiltration units were going, as well as looking at a possible retention, detention area to the east. We don't need that area. We can accommodate the stormwater management within the cul-de-sac and under the cul-de-sac proper. Again, the utilities will all emanate from St. Joseph's. One point to be made is that the sewer in St. Joseph is relatively shallow. By the time we get into the cul-de-sac lot, the lots to the west can be sewed by gravity. It's anticipated that the two lots that are to the east of the cul-de-sac would probably need ejector pumps in order to lift the sewage to the manhole in the new Jeffrey Lane. Those are really the highlights of what we are proposing to do. I would like to introduce for the record to the board comments that I have addressed. We received a peer review report from Russo. My clients felt that the peer review was unwarranted and really unauthorized, but we are addressing the comments made by the engineer, Mr. Kuhn. Of the comments that were listed, you'll notice that a couple of them have been addressed and were addressed on the plan. One of the concerns was with the frontage requirement. The engineer indicated that he felt that frontage was derived at the setback. East Long Metal is one of the communities that derives its frontage along the right-of-way line, so that the lots do conform with the frontage requirements as put out there. We will be asking for a couple of waivers. Currently, Jeffrey Lane is 50 feet in width as a right-of-way. The town regulation is currently a 60 feet. We would ask that we be able to hold that 50 feet right-of-way width coming into, rather than just bowing out to 60 feet in that location. Also, within the subdivision regulations, pavement width minimum is listed as 30 feet. We would request that the 24-foot pavement width be allowed, which has been allowed in other instances where you're servicing a very small number of lots. What it does do is it provides adequate vehicle safety for police, fire, and delivery vehicles, but on the terms of long-term maintenance, the town has less pavement at the time that they have to go in and redo. Cul-de-sac pavement width is not asking to be reduced. Police and fire need a minimum radius in order to transition around the cul-de-sac, and we are not asking for that to be reduced at all. The third waiver we will be requesting when we submit the definitive plan would be for this waiver sidewalk. There are no walks on Jeffrey Lane, no St. Joseph's Drive, nor on Summers Road at this point in time, so we would be requesting that as a waiver in the definitive plan process. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. The booster pumps for the sewer for the other two homes, who will be maintaining those pumps?
Those are all homeowner maintained.
So the town has no responsibility in that whatsoever?
No. We've done this, we did this on Black Dog Lane. We did this also out on Pease Road. The owners of the property are responsible all the way up to the main, meaning that if there's a plug out in the public way, the homeowner is still responsible. So they take it from the house to the manhole or to the T intersection at the main.
Where it becomes gravity fed.
Correct. Yep.
So what is the distance, distance between St. Joseph's to the lot line, to the property line?
This distance is 125 feet.
Okay.
And we're adding about 100 and, well, to the very end of the cul-de-sac, roughly about another 175 feet.
And did I hear that you were going to do some improvements to that area?
Yes. The fact that we're gonna bring water, sewer, gas lines.
So you'll repave.
It'll be all brought up to subdivision standard process. Yep.
Lou? Questions? Lou? John?
Just a maybe a small question. This retaining wall in this property, is that gonna be going in or is that already in?
That's an existing, the butter to the parcel, number 48, St. Joseph's has that retained.
I know what the stormwater situation would be for.
We have no need to be involved at all.
I have a, this is President A, correct?
Correct.
I have a question on your frontage. If I'm reading this plan correctly, I'm seeing a length here of 118 on one lot and certainly less than 140 on the other two. Can you?
Well, you're correct. This would end up having to be extend, this property line in the definitive would extend over. We've got the 420 feet necessary to make the 140 feet of frontage.
So, the lot lines shown on here are gonna have to move?
Particularly the lot line that comes in this direction, if you will. Yes.
Okay, 'cause I mean, you've got three here. One is 118.
Mm-hmm.
The other one looks like, looks to be about 130, and the other one is 120.
No, this, this one is 150, 150 something.
I see a 96.4 and 31.38.
And 12.22.
Where's that?
Right, right on the, there's an arrow pointing to from the end of the old Jeffrey Lane to.
Oh, okay.
In there.
I got it. And the other, the other one has additional.
Yes, has additional.
Oh, actually, you get additional 18 feet there.
Correct.
And so the one, yeah, so the one that's 118 is gonna.
We can make the 140, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
How come you didn't draw it already in there?
Under the preliminary, we were looking at changing the configurations and missed it, quite frankly.
Okay. So where do the school buses pick up the kids on St. Joseph's? Is it at the top of the street on Summers Road?
Summers Road, yeah.
Okay. So it's not, that's not gonna necessitate it coming up and down the street or?
I don't believe so unless they found it.
Okay.
The problem with St. Joseph's is you can't turn around. Okay, this plan I'll open up to the public.
Oh, may I just?
Please.
So we have had comment from the building commissioner, Kevin Duquette, and he responds to the planning board after a review of the submitted documents for the, I'm so sorry, wrong one. I apologize. I got mine.
Okay. You don't have comments yet?
Nope.
Okay. So at that point, I'll open it to the public. Again, if you can, perch the microphone and I need your name and address for the record. Please.
Hello, my name is Carla Garmes, and I live at 28 St. Joseph's Drive. And I just have a couple of questions. This is very new to me. I had no idea that this was happening. I've lived on my street since 1972, and so I've seen a lot of changes in the back behind me. I remember when there was a quarry back there, so I know there's water somewhere, and I remember it being filled in. But I just have a couple of really quick questions. First of all, lightly wooded, I mean, you ought to be in my house when you have to break leaves and fall. Tons of leaves come. So lightly wooded, I'm not sure what that means, but, you know, maybe you're right in the way you define it, I don't know. I just, I can't imagine it being any more wooded than it is right now, so that's just... And another thing, we put an in-ground swimming pool in a long time ago, and there's solid rock there, so they had to blast with dynamite. So I'm just wondering how, if they're gonna be putting the gas and electric lines and the sewers and all that, they're gonna be blasting, 'cause I don't think it's gonna go in very easy. And I don't know if that's gonna have any effect on our houses that are gonna be so close. I don't know. 'Cause I don't know how much blasting's gonna have to be done. But I know that to put in just a swimming pool, there was quite a little bit of blasting. And I don't understand, like, right now, there's 50 feet, so I didn't get that. This is just a very quick question. So, something about 50 feet, 'cause I couldn't see, 'cause I was in the back, is gonna be increased to 60 feet? What is gonna be increased?
Okay. No, what we are asking, will be asking, under the definitive plans, the middle is, right now, Jeffrey Lane, the right-of-way, the property lines, for what people know, is 50 feet in width.
Right.
When subdivision rules and regulations were changed, the minimum was 60 feet wide for a right-of-way.
Oh.
So what we will be asking is just to maintain the 50 feet of width right in there.
Okay.
But I would also stress, though, that because it's important, the cul-de-sac is not going to be narrowed or taken down in any size at this point because of safety for houses.
And just one more quick question, because somebody mentioned school buses. Okay, so in the past, there ha, right now, there isn't, but in the past, there had been a request because of a kindergarten student on our street, that a school bus come down so that that student would not have to cross Summers Road, Route 83, to get on or off the bus.
Is that what they do now?
Because. So, there was, at one point, a school bus that came down, it was a full, it wasn't a small mini bus or anything. A school bus that came down, but it was able to turn in the cul-de-sac that's on the street right now. But, so that, just to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Do you know if there are a lot of school-aged children on St. Joseph's already?
Oh, yeah. Well, right across from there is a three-year-old. So there are, you know, school-aged. So he will be, by the time this comes into effect, I'm sure he will be going to school. In fact, his mother was talking to me today, and she knows, because she's very concerned about what's going on naturally, as we all are. But, you know, there are a couple of girls next to me, ones I think at Monmouth View, ones at the high school.
Like, Mr. Chairman, just for your, again, not speaking for the school department, I don't know, but the cul-de-sac, when built, would have offered the opportunity, if they wanted to pick people, their children, up along St. Joseph's, to come in and turn and go right back out without having to back, well, they can't back up, so, I mean, there would be a benefit there potentially.
I'd like to have you address your question about blasting, because I don't think that that's something the town is going to allow.
Right.
Okay, so how do you intend to?
We did do test pits, as I indicated, within the subdivision. We did not do any within the Jeffrey Lane. We did not find a redstone that is in those areas that we did the test pits, so we don't expect to find ledge in this area. The other issue is that we are not deep. All of our utilities are, the sewer and water particularly, which normally can be five to eight or whatever feet deep. In this case, they're gonna be at the five-foot depth. Gas and electric usually are, unfortunately, a little shallower than that, at two feet or less. So in that case, we don't anticipate, because of our shallowness running into that.
Okay.
And what about basements?
What's that?
What about basements?
What about basements? Again, the test pits showed enough of elevational difference. This, both of these, we got at least nine feet before we started seeing water coming in, 10 feet. We didn't have any redstone. I think they found it up in this corner here when they were doing test pits on the Noel area, so it may be there.
But just to make the comment, blasting is not gonna be allowed.
Right.
Okay, so that should not be an issue for you.
Right.
Okay, they will figure out how to put the houses in without blowing the place up.
Well, that's, that's very reassuring, let me tell you. Because just to, yeah, just one little more thing. Like I said, I've lived there a long time, so I've seen a lot of things going on and trying to go on, and on the southerly part of Jeffrey Lane, the other little spot, they were, a gentleman bought, purchased land, I wanna say, like, 25 years ago, and he did attempt to put houses on the southerly and found that because of the cost of, because of the rock and the ledge and whatever, I mean, like I said, I don't really know too much about that, but it deterred him, so that's why there are no houses there now. So just so you know, I mean, I'm just a little bit concerned about, you know, how they're gonna get this. I'm just a little.
Sure, no, I appreciate your concern. I'm sure blasting is not gonna be allowed, and it's up to the developer to decide whether or not this is economical. That's not, not our job, so, so thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other, anyone else who might want to address?
Do you have that report, the test pits?
I have it here, yeah. They would be submitted as part of the definitive.
Did the Conservation Commission go over the?
Do you need your name and address?
I'm sorry, Scott Geier, 33 St. Joseph's. 'Cause it says that there are, could be wetlands.
Yes, he looked at the aerial photography rather than.
Well, it says it's supposed to be verified by a wetland scientist.
We previously had that done in the Conservation Commission.
You got all that?
Yep. Negative determination, which was done last May, and has stood for three years.
Yeah.
But one other point I would make in that report is he indicated that test pits needed to be done in the location of the infiltration area that we were proposing. He obviously missed the fact that we had done one directly in the location of the infiltration area.
Those test pits went down nine feet before you had locked?
Yeah.
I can't think of one foot.
Groundwater was a little higher.
Anthony, how deep is it in your backyard? Throw up the topsoil, do you know?
Topsoil, some, yeah. Should probably go down.
Sure. Just your name, not hers.
Danielle, 38 St. Joseph's Drive, the one with the garage right there, shit. There's six, there's sections in my yard that you can't dig six inches without hitting stuff. I mean, I can almost guarantee they're gonna have to blast into Jeffrey Lane.
Well, they're not gonna blast.
Well, no, you're not gonna be able to get in there.
Well, if, if.
Because, like I said, I mean, there's, there's spots between, we had to replace this section of compressed air line between the house and the garage, and I couldn't go six inches.
Well, this is up to, again.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's up to the, the feasibility, but.
If they start, if they start excavating and they hit ledge.
Oh, they're definitely.
They're gonna have to deal with it.
Yeah.
But they're not gonna do it with dynamite, I can tell you that.
Okay. That's good to know.
Very good.
Yep.
You know, and I, you know, I'm familiar with the geology of the town, if you, and I know that ledge can be very spotty.
Yes.
You can have it here.
Yes.
12 feet away, you don't have it.
Yep.
It's just the way the rock is and the way it's been worked over the centuries. Okay?
I don't know East Long Metal history as well as I know South Lake, Massachusetts history, but from what I do know is this was all quarry, and then it was backfilled to where the, behind there where the wetlands is now.
Yeah.
That was all backfill.
Yeah.
That's the best I know. It's pretty much this entire section was.
Right here, up in here.
All through here.
All up in here.
Up to the backside of our properties, this was all quarry.
And then a lot of.
That was all backfilled.
A lot of it was then filled in when they, when they stopped.
Yep.
Yeah. In fact, a lot of it, just a quick comment, a lot of it was, you dig out one quarry, and then when, when it was done, you take the next quarry, you just dump it in the first quarry.
So the last quarry is vacant?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment on this at this time or ask questions? Hearing none, I take it back to the board. I'm, personally, I will say that I think that we need to require sidewalks all the way around the cul-de-sac, just on the basis that it's easier to put them in now than later, and at some point, we would hope that St. Joseph's and the rest of Jeffrey would get their sidewalk so that the kids don't have to walk in the street to get down to the school bus. But as a general policy, I personally prefer to have the sidewalks in. I mean, I'm a little disappointed that we don't have the frontages correct yet, but I'm looking forward, and I'm hoping that on the definitive, rather than having to add them up, we'll have the frontages shown, you know, as.
Total.
As total.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have any questions or comments on the preliminary. Anyone else? John?
I just echo your same concerns about the sidewalks, too.
Lou?
Maybe, but.
Russ?
Sidewalks, I don't know if they have to be on both sides of the street, but in any event, I don't want the town to be, have to come back 10, 15, 20 years from now and put sidewalks in and want them done now, so one side is fine with me, but if the town would be doing it on both sides, then, then let's do that, because I don't want the town spending any more money on sidewalks. let's do that, because I don't want the town spending any more money on sidewalks.
Yeah, well, my feeling is, you got a cul-de-sac, it should go all the way around the cul-de-sac, and that to finish it off is only another few, another 12 feet, so it makes sense.
12 feet?
To do the whole.
All sides.
Yeah.
If I may, can we bring it up one side of Jeffrey and around, if you will? Sidewalks impact, these are, these are abutters, obviously.
Yeah.
By holding to, you know.
If you would bring it in from St. Joseph, I could see going as far as partially onto the last lot. Okay? That would be, I think that's a trade-off I would, I would entertain.
To the driveway.
Yeah, to the driveway on, on final lot. Either direction, whatever works for you, but that way the kids can at least get out to St. Joseph on the sidewalk, and that's good. Who's going to maintain the, you can have the homeowners' association to maintain the stormwater?
We will. I'm, I mean, this is in the public way, set up to be in the public way. I mean, this, this is a pretty low-maintenance, small area.
I would either.
I would confer with the DPW.
I would ask you to confer with DPW and to get some kind of agreement with them that either it's going to be the homeowners' association or DPW's going to take it, because they don't want to see it go in.
Right.
And nobody owns it. Okay? So it's up to DPW to make that determination, not us.
Yep.
Anything else from the public?
The sidewalk you're talking about, it's going to go, that would be going onto my property up to the driveway?
It's not on your property, it would be in the public way.
In the public way, so that would be?
It's like eight feet back.
How many feet?
I think it's like eight feet on the property.
Okay, so we, I don't know what that, I don't know what that judgment is on.
Yeah, it may look like it's what you think is your property.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a right-of-way to it, but how far into is that?
What's the scale on this?
It's a 40, 40 scale.
Yeah.
I think your tree belt width that's there now is probably around 12 feet or so.
Okay.
To the pavement.
Okay. So it'd be the center of the line to the road to the 12 feet?
It's 14, roughly.
Center line of the road, 25 feet.
Yeah, 12 feet.
Okay, okay.
12 feet.
12 feet from the?
From the edge of the pavement.
From the curb.
Okay.
So that's where it would go, and it'd be.
Yeah, that's just why I wanted to clarify that. Okay.
Yeah, a lot of people don't realize that their property doesn't go up like the street.
Well, we're, I just didn't know what the, what the numbers were.
Yeah. The only downside is you're probably going to have to, have to clear it in the wintertime.
Yeah.
In the bowway.
Well, we usually wind up clearing the street there anyways, because the town never does itself.
Well, I don't think Jeffrey Lane has actually been accepted yet by the town. Because it's not up to standard.
They did it for a while, but they.
I mean, officially, officially, I don't think the town owns it. Okay, I think it's a private way. Any other questions on this one?
Okay.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, that means that we will not take any more testimony on this, and we will proceed to a decision. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Opposed? Okay. All those in favor, I mean, a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan subject to the frontages being brought up to standard. We, we'll do that with definitive. Okay?
So is this deciding the entire thing right now?
No.
Or just, just the preliminary?
We're just approving the preliminary, we'll do the waivers when we come to the definitive. Right? Okay.
So I'll move.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to do a personal notice? Hi?
Hi.
George?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye. Regardless of whether it was warranted or authorized.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. And you understand that you will not be allowed to blast.
George, it's a rock, what do I do now?
They have these things called rollers. Okay.